Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's Monday night, December 12th. We're opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting at 6:01. Anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam. Ally Gol is recording. Guess what? I'm gonna record too. If I can get this to work, we'll be in good shape. All right. We've got a number of things on the agenda tonight. The first thing is to talk with Mr. Vincent Ferrera at 6:15. And at 6:30, Sean Proventure from DCR. So, before we get to 6:15, we're gonna run through some of the stuff that we have to do. First of all, before I get to that, anybody here for public discussion? Okay, nobody. All right, the first thing, Mr. Joseph, it's okay with you, sign the Comstat contract.
Yes.
Chief, it's your page, it's here. You wanna talk about it?
No.
You got a recommendation for us?
My recommendation is we approve the contract. It's for 6 months. I think it's in Free Town. I think it's helping increase our air most revenue. I think we, what's the way of Christian way of doing air most done?
You're good with the contract?
I'm good with it.
Jackie, Hubble, uh, Town Council, they're good with the contract? We're all set?
That sounds good to me.
Make a motion to endorse.
Motion to endorse. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, we got more than one to sign. That's it. This is a Comstat, same thing, this is another Comstat.
It looks like this is a couple different.
And this is the second one.
Is the layout the same? It looks like there's no one's different layout, yes.
I think they're gonna sign it. That's the second part of it.
Yeah, see, that's the second part.
Yep. All right. That's sacred. Look here. There you see.
Let them be in the statement text.
All right, the next thing is to, we're notified by the Town Council on a monthly basis, the assignment insurance write-off for the month of October. Forty-two thousand, two fifty-five, eighty.
Make a motion to accept forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, eighty cents for the air most payments.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just in time, you see, we just walked in?
I did not.
Highway surveyor, just in time. Come on up.
You're up.
Chuck McCombe.
Good evening.
Good evening. You want us to do something?
Yeah, but there's no cause for you, unless now for you to jump off.
All right. Well, that's very nice of you.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Sorry.
We have an officer here, we can have him removed.
Please. Um, we got three Chapter 90 projects we finished out. We just need to do the final reports, and so we can get reimbursed the money that we spent. Brayley Road was approved for a hundred thirty thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. We spent a hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars, eighty-six cents. Walms Street was approved for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. We spent sixteen thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars. And Slabbridge Road was approved for two fifty-seven, three twenty-one, eighty. We spent two forty-seven, six fifty-four, forty.
Two hundred and three isn't bad.
Huh?
Two hundred and three isn't bad.
Yeah.
And if you can do a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, no, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar project and only overspend it by four hundred dollars, I don't think that's so bad. It's less than point oh-three percent. What's that, Al?
I only have two or three here.
You read the hot copies?
These have been.
Hard to read.
This is for two forty-seven, right?
Yep, that one's here.
Then this one's here, for sixteen, that's it. And one thirty, I thought I saw one thirty. And one thirty's way down at the bottom.
Oh, it's out of order that way. Make a motion to endorse, um, for the reimbursement of one thirty. We're requesting, what, one thirty, eight sixty-seven, eighty-six?
Correct.
For the resurfacing of Brayley Road?
Yep.
Do it all as one.
That's your motion? You're gonna do it all?
All one, yeah. Sixteen thousand, this is a question of issue with them. Sixteen thousand, five six, sixteen thousand, five five six, for the resurfacing of Walms Street, and two hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and forty cents for the resurfacing, for the resurfacing of Slabbridge Road. The Slabbridge, yeah, Slabbridge Road, from Elm Street to Bull.
Correct.
I'll second the motion. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. You find a note, just give it to Ally.
You don't want us to move back to you?
I'll give it to Ally tomorrow. Are you gonna get it signed tomorrow?
Will you follow a map? If I leave a map for you to follow?
Absolutely.
Maybe you can jump off the, down in, um...
Absolutely.
Okay, in the zone. What is that called? The ledge, the ledge.
Profile wreck.
All right, we have to appoint a public records officer under the new rules and regulations in Massachusetts. I was speaking with Jackie about this.
Was she coming in to speak with us?
She's coming in.
Yes, that's written demo says.
I thought.
All right. So, hold off on that.
I mean, I can make a motion to appoint her while she's not here.
That would, well, she actually offered to be the public...
She's done the schooling for her and everything.
Yeah, she's the one that, you have to have one in each department, but you have to have a master. So, I'm gonna second your motion if you wanna do it now before she gets...
Why don't we let me do, make your presentation, in case she doesn't want it. Then we'll do it anyhow, but...
I think she does, because she already mentioned that she can do it. All right. So, we'll wait for that one. You wanna do the next one?
Uh, what's next?
Just do the minutes next.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one issue with the minutes.
I did read through the minutes?
Yeah, I have one thing. Let me see if I can find my, my notes in here of the minutes. Oh, yeah, on page four, where it says, Selectmen said it also noted that all the assessors have full-time jobs. That reference, I think we should, the reason we were talking, the reason I was, I made that statement was because if something happens to Karen, we have no backup.
Nobody fills the position.
Right, I mean, even if she broke her ankle and she was out for two or three weeks, we had no, that's the reason I put that in. So, could we clarify that in the minutes, Ally? That the reason I said that was because we have no backup in the assessor's office, and we were talking about putting the part-time person in there to learn the job.
That's why we're talking about floating Tim over there too, to get some experience.
Absolutely. All right, that, I have no issue.
I have no issue with that, no. I'll make a motion to accept minutes dated November 14th.
Uh, in November 28th.
November 28th, yes.
Motion made, uh, I'll second it. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. With that correction, we're all set. One more minute, let's, I guess, through the line, not for a minute. I don't think we can do anything else, but we don't have time to do it.
I have all those other ones to do.
Yeah. They're gonna take some time. How long is your administrative's report?
Very short.
Can you make it in two minutes?
Then I can.
All right.
Um, I think we've finally gotten to the point of resolving our issues with NRG on our solar credits contract. I might be giving you some detail on that later this week in an email. We'll be hearing from Sean Proventure in, in just a moment from DCR on another project we've been working on. OPM proposals, like you, I've spent an incredible amount of time reviewing all of these owner's project manager proposals for the police station project, and getting ready for the meeting on Wednesday, the building committee. I hope most of us will come to that meeting with recommendations in terms of who the finalists are that we'll be interviewing. Free Town screw site update, as you know, the town of Krishna has finally done what the town of Free Town did some time ago, and passed a town meeting article to move forward with petition, petition legislature, to transfer the right of the town to, on the tax title property for lot one, in order to try to put that cleanup together, and at the same time, move forward with the senior housing project that's being planned for the site. And probably working with Town Council, again, the shared Town Council in this case, and the president of Jonathan Eichman, and I've already been in touch with him, we talked with him today.
That only moves forward if the funding is available.
That's correct.
To do any cleanup on that site.
Yeah, well, the good news is that our engineer, Tracy Costa, has talked with our representative, Charlotte Matthews, at Mass Development. We have forty-four thousand dollars remaining in the original grant that we received, and she's open to it being used for that property. So, more to come on that, but that's the status.
Forty-four thousand left for the cleanup?
That's correct, yep. I'll be going to a dam meeting, no pun intended, tomorrow at the Bedford Water Works Building, where representatives from Middleboro, Lakeville, Rochester, Taunton, the Bedford and Free Town get together to talk about issues around the ponds right now. Most of those issue are low water issues, not high water issues. And I'll see you Wednesday night.
They still working on the Namaska River issue?
I'm sorry, yes.
That's the, that's the big problem with the Namaska River.
It is.
Because of the silt.
Because of the...
They still working on that.
In vegetation, yes.
Yeah, for me.
Yep, and there's been, there's been work done most recently with the low water situation. They've been out there removing a lot of the silt and creating pathway for the heron fry to get out.
But that will certainly help us on high water.
Yes, it will.
All right. Thank you, Jack.
You bet.
All right, so, at 6:15, Mr. Vincent Ferrera, would you like to come up?
Sure.
Talk to us.
Yep. Last we met, I submitted a petition over seventy-five residents of Free Town. You know, this, 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 uh, displeased about the Stop and Shop trucks going by their community, especially during school drop-off and pickup hours. So, that was back in, oh, June, August. So, I have a letter from Stop and Shop, an agreement stating that, they said on September 8th, request that all third-party carriers access Route 24 via exit A B exclusively. We cannot guarantee that all carriers will come, will comply with this request, but expectation is that most will. On September 9th, we placed a sign at the warehouse entrance exiting stating that the following, all outside carriers, please turn right to access Route 24 North and South. Thank you. Third thing was on September 15th, all Stop and Shop trucks will use exit B exclusively during school drop-off and pickup hours, from 6:30 to 9:00, 1:30 to 4:30. They did, they did hopefully relay that to the trucks that do business with Stop and Shop, but not owned by Stop and Shop. So, I have some, just wanted to show you two videos that my wife has taken, because I work. And this one's pretty, trucks beating by my daughter, actually waiting for the bus, you know, she had to back out of the way. And there's another one. I get over ten videos of these drivers who just refuse to, you know, ignore the signs and just go by while the kids are getting picked up. This one's pretty disturbing. The truck has, the bus has the yellow flashing lights on, and the truck just blatantly goes right by the bus. Now, these are first graders, kindergarten, third graders. I mean, I know we can't stop them from going all the time, but at least abide by the, you know, restricted times.
That bus had its yellow lights on.
Yeah.
And it was still moving when that truck went by.
Yeah, but it didn't even, like, slow down. I mean...
And it's not the first time, there's been other instances where...
But you are aware that there's nothing the town can do to stop Stop and Shop from putting their traffic on the road?
No, but they, they built that on-ramp exclusively for the semi-trucks. They bought the on-ramp, they paid for it. Now, I know there are safety, I work in quality insurance myself, I work in a hospital, I work for infection control, and I know under quality insurance, I mean, you gotta abide by the statistics, like, I abide by the safety of my patients. They need to abide by the safety of our children, our residents of Free Town. I mean, they, they can stress that, you know, we have a ramp designed for trucks, why can't you just take a right? And it doesn't even save them time down by my house, to be honest with you. That ramps instant access to the highway. Going by my house, they gotta slow down for the school bus, there's traffic, the Dunkin' Donuts traffic, the Santa. It's, it's a lot better for them to go that way. I don't understand why they don't. I mean, I know, I know we can't stop it all the time, but it's just when my daughter gets on the bus, gets off the bus.
These are validly registered vehicles. We can't stop people from taking certain, I commend Stop and Shop for, for telling their drivers not to come this way, but they can't possibly prevent every truck from going down that way.
Hubble did what instead of speeding? I mean, we have...
Well, if you have trucks that are speeding...
I have videos of them, I don't wanna see.
Wait a minute, in cars that are speeding, we just call the police department, they can go down there and, and they'll set up radar traffic.
Absolutely.
Okay? But you cannot prevent trucks and people from using the roadway.
I don't want to prevent people, it's just the eighteen-wheel.
They pay the same taxes as you and I, the same registration fees. You know, I mean, we had somebody come in to talk to us subsequent to what Stop and Shop, and saying that they feel like all the trucks are now going by their house, instead of coming the other way. So, how do you, how do you, tell me how you make everybody happy?
Well...
You can't.
It's gonna, no one's gonna happen when they hit a school bus, then stuff will happen, then there'll be lawsuits against Stop and Shop. You know, it's just, and that, you know, I'm, I'm trying to do, I'm trying to be an active resident, and I'm trying to speak for the over seventy-five residents, and I'm, I'm calm compared to some of the residents that ripped the petition out of my hand. I mean, these are children, it's not just adults, I mean, these are children that get on school buses, and buses are flying, I mean, the trucks are flying by buses, and some of them are blatantly being ignorant, they're beeping their horns and...
The speed limit is what, thirty there?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and they're going thirty-five, forty, easy. I can, if I had a radar gun, I would take the speed to the temperature, I mean, I'd take the, you know, readings from trucks.
Well, I think that's something we can definitely address, is have some extra patrol...
We got the police chief is listening to us, and one of our sergeants, they're hearing it. Those guys have complete...
We operate radar down there.
Can we call for a miniature?
Come on up, chief. This is Chief Carlton Happ.
Hi, good day. We operate radar down there periodically, but usually it's when a resident complains, we'll, we'll go down there. We've set up our radar trailer frequently down there, and we collect a lot of data that tells us the speeds, et cetera, and nothing alarming has been shown. That's not to say that there are periodic, you know, vehicles that travel periodically that exceed the speed limit, but if you'd like the radar trailer deployed, or, or if you think there's a particular location or time, you know, we can send a patrol down there with radar. That's not a problem.
Chief, is there anything we can do to stop Stop and Shop, Stop and Shop trucks from using South Main Street?
No.
Why they build the ramp?
It's a, it's a public way within, within town, and anybody can use the public way. There are some exceptions under Chapter 90, Section 19, but they, they relate to the dimensions and height and things like that of vehicles, but other than that, I, I don't see anything that would prohibit them.
What are the times? I'm sorry.
Well, on the agreement of Stop and Shop, they mentioned that the times that were restricted were six thirty to nine AM and one thirty to four thirty. This is Stop and Shop letter.
That's the letter they voluntarily, voluntarily said they were gonna do for you.
There's no agreement, that's a letter that they sent, they sent to the town in response to your petition, saying this is what they were gonna try to do.
That letter's useless. That letter is useless, unenforceable. Now, as you're aware, we've talked a couple of times, several times...
Yeah, I spoke to Carol Fiola too, she's on board, and she's gonna have a meeting with Stop and Shop too.
Um, I went down, I sat with them, they didn't, originally they didn't wanna do anything, and I voiced your concerns. And they saw where you're coming from, your concerns about, especially about school hours. I told them about the situation we had in East Free Town, and they were willing to, the company in East Free Town was willing to abate traffic during the school hours. They said they were gonna do their best to do the same thing, which, we've already had that conversation, I, I told you that. They're not bound to do any of that stuff, they didn't enter anything with us, we didn't sign contracts saying any of that, but it was to your concerns that they, they offered to do that, which I thought was a, a good gesture at their part.
Well, I guess the chairman, is there, Mr. Ferrera, is there a meeting set up? Because I, I'd like to...
Carol said, I just got off the phone with Carol before I, I came to this meeting, she said that she's gonna meet with Jim LaBreck, he's the vice president of operations for Stop and Shop, they're gonna set up a meeting, and she's gonna voice her concern, because I showed her that video, and she was, she was disturbed about the truck blowing by, the school bus with the yellow, yellow lights flashing on it.
Who was Carol?
Carol, she's still, she's, she's a state rep. So, I even met Carol in person before I came here, and she's on board, and she has kids, she has children herself, they're older now, but she understands.
When you first came with the petition, I talked with Carol.
Yeah.
And Paul Schmidt.
Mm-hmm.
And Mike Rogers, about the whole thing. We talked to them all. There's not, there's no enforcement, other than if they're breaking the law, that's one thing. Now, you mentioned that, that exit ramp, the new one that was put in, that was put in for Innovation Way, it wasn't put in for Stop and Shop.
I thought they paid for it.
No, they didn't pay for it. They offered to pay for one originally when they wanted to put, but they wanted to dictate where it went, because they didn't want it put up there.
That was when they were building. That was long time ago.
That was 2002 to 2004.
I mean, if I was a truck driver, I'd wanna use a truck that's designed, you know, for, for heavy traffic like that, for big vehicles. I don't know, I don't know why they wanna go by. And the stone bridge over, I don't even know the weight capacity of that stone bridge, you know, past Cobra Cup, there's all a stone bridge here.
They just rebuilt it in 2000.
I mean, I didn't know the weight capacity that thing is, but...
The state does the inspections now.
Somebody else had to handle that, not you. This one.
Why can't we just take a sign bigger than the little microwave one that Stop and Shop put up on 24? Put it on the trucker's information sign saying Stop and Shop, A B, just like the industrial park label for that.
When I spoke to Carol Fiola, because the state's responsible for that, that was one of the things we had mentioned, is some signage changes. Her concerns was they just made signage changes, and they didn't wanna make any more signage changes. But I agree with you. If there was a bigger sign before exit nine saying Stop and Shop Traffic Use A B, there might be some change, and that's one of the reasons we usually talk about, I said, I told you get Carol Fiola involved.
She is involved.
Because it's a state, that's a state that we can't put signs in the same highways.
Stop and Shop paid for the little one that's twenty feet off the road that you can't even see doing sixty-five in the trucks, and everybody does eighty on the highway.
It doesn't even say Stop and Shop, it all says is industrial traffic or something.
Now, there's a small one, literally brown, just after exit 10, that's way off the road, it's the size of a toaster, that says Stop and Shop, A B.
A B.
You can't see it, unless you're...
Looking for it.
Looking for it.
Actually, way back when you could, now the brush is overgrown.
Well, exactly.
And that's why...
You know, and let's face it, with technology, there is absolutely no excuse how Stop and Shop can't say when they're making their bill of lateings and putting orders in their customers, here's a footnote, please have your delivery driver use A B, and not interfere with our residents. Because when they wanted to build Stop and Shop, they said, we're gonna make our own on-ramp and off-ramp.
That's what I was...
Because we didn't wanna interfere with our residents. They made Innovation Way, it's a better, it's more use, where it's Amazon, does a lot of things, but Stop and Shop has done nothing but pretty much blow yours off.
Well, they haven't beat a lot of traffic. Is the traffic nearly as what it was prior to that?
He's still driving the trucks up on the Bay Shores. I would say the traffic is, they're still coming by, but it's, it's about sixty, sixty, forty, they're still coming by.
So, you're saying sixty percent of the traffic's still using it and ignoring what, what he said he was gonna do?
I would say during the school time, it's still forty percent, or all day, I would say fifty-fifty.
Guarantee an increase once Amazon's up and running.
And that's another thing too.
You're gonna see some units...
Good point, UPS is coming by my house too. Eighteen-wheeler is UPS, they're coming by.
Yes, South Main.
You should bring back the head to handle.
Paul, Rich Leveque, 213 South Main Street. You know where I live? I live right on the corner of that stupid Innovation Drive.
Yeah.
My house has been impacted, big time. I've been fighting this for ten years, and I've been talking to deaf ears on the Board of Selectmen, I've been talking to deaf ears with the state reps, I've been talking to deaf ears to everyone. Nobody wants to hear it, because tax money's coming in, okay? Nobody wants to hear it. Nobody wants to hear the problems we're having up there. We got eight houses, just from Brightman's back, we're not even part of Free Town, nobody knows who the hell we are, unless it's tax time. Then they know who we are. That has been, the thing we should've done was ten years ago, when Larry Ashley put on that dog and pony show, we should've said no then. Six hundred trucks a day? Nah, there's a lot more than six hundred trucks a day. Amazon has added a, they got these little fancy little tractors with these big bright lights on the back that take empty trailers, and they're parking them, I'm not sure who owns that land near the...
Went back over.
They're parking them, that, that's been there for a month.
It was overnight.
That's been there for, somebody's making some money on that.
People are getting rich off this.
Somebody's making some money on this whole thing. And be careful, Carol Fiola, remember, it's your husband, that's the executive vice president of the Fall River Office of Economic Development, Amazon, and Innovation Drive. There's conflict? Maybe? Yes? No? I don't know, I wasn't born yesterday. I'm pretty mad about this, I'm still mad about this. You wanna do something, I'll give you my number.
I got seventy-five other people too.
Well, make it seventy-six.
So, so you want them to go, you want them to go into the...
I'm running away, Bob, okay? That's what we want.
But unless you can...
That would make everybody happy.
Close them, which you can't do.
We can't make it happen, I know that, Paul.
What are you talking about? Are you saying that you want Stop and Shop to leave and Amazon to close down?
Absolutely, kick them all out. That's exactly what I want, I kick them all out. It's pragmatically, pragmatically, it can't happen.
Of course not.
Because we made that mistake, and shame on us for not stopping them.
You want the same thing?
Realistically, I just want, no, I'm, I'm realist. They can use the ramp that, that's designed for them, for the safety of our residents and our children. God forbid, if eighteen Will hits a school bus, I will use the full power of people I know, all the money I can, to sue the shit out of Stop and Shop. Cause I don't want my daughter getting hurt. Don't forget the town.
That's your prerogative.
And I have seventy-five people back in your mark.
Nobody wants, nobody wants any accidents. We don't want any school bus to be hit, okay? I had, my kids are grown now, but they were little like that, and we were concerned about them also. But you know what? How do you, tell us how we can fix this. Rich thinks we ought to get rid of Stop and Shop and Amazon. We should have let it happen.
I'd set a fire up under them, blow it up. I really would.
There you go.
That's me. Pragmatically, Paul, we can't do that, okay? Cause I ain't going to jail for Stop and Shop.
It'd make everybody's life a lot easier if they used the ramp that was designed for them. And zoning. I don't even know if that's an industrial zone where I live. It could be a residential slash, I could assign a petition.
Makes use.
Part of its town, part of its...
I mean, if I go, I, nothing.
But that has nothing to do with the roads. That's what you can use the property.
But I'm pretty sure, so many trucks that are zoned to go on industrial zoning area.
No.
No, this truck's validly registered.
What does it take to get the state more on board with putting more signage for Stop and Shop?
They represent, they represent, that's why I pointed them to Carol Fiola and Michael Roberts right from the beginning.
Cause I mean, safety is at all.
They don't wanna change the stuff. The comment was, well, we already put signage up.
I wish I could take the magic wand that all selectmen are supposed to have and just tap, and make them tap.
Look at all the tractor trailers parked on South Main Street. You look like a truck stop now. All tractor trailers parked in private property, not even theirs, the oldest selling Village Pizza. They just tore down the ropes and everything and started parking over there. Tommy's Garage, they're all lined up over there. He's gotta kick them out to stop business.
I don't know what Barry's doing, whether he's gonna agree with that.
I've been trying to get DOT to put a no jake break sign coming down that hill towards South Main Street. Do you know what it's like in the middle of the summer to be sleeping and have a truck going down that hill? That wakes you right up.
I do. I lived on South Main Street for ten years.
Yep, but live where I live, right on the corner of that monstrosity.
I lived two houses from exit nine.
Hmm. Well, there you go.
It was an old house, so the window was rattled because there's no putting in.
It was a mistake we made. We made this mistake. How do we live with it?
We just keep making that same mistake.
Yes.
You're gonna let Excel start, how many trucks is Excel gonna do every day?
No idea.
No idea. And then you wanna put the trash place up there. How many trucks is that gonna bring a day? How are you gonna fix all of this?
You know what? Let me, let me say something to you. Do you wanna stop, you have, the zoning board, listen, the zoning board, you have to have areas for industry. The zoning board and the townspeople voted to have these certain areas for industry, plain and simple. Now, we've got these areas so they don't affect neighborhoods, because in the past, and I don't know how long you've been in Free Town. When I've been in here forty-two years, we had businesses right next to residents. So the planning board...
We still do.
Well, you do because...
You have a scrapyard behind everybody's house.
There's a what?
You have a scrapyard in behind everybody's house.
But that's in an industrial area.
It's still behind the houses.
But those houses weren't there when that was zoned industrial.
The houses where you put the scrapyard was still.
Paul, if you have Amazon, Stop and Shop, use exit A B, you won't see all the traffic and everybody won't be...
I would love to have them use A B, trust me. That's why I went down there in the first place to try to get them to use A B. They don't wanna use A B, unfortunately, because of their own reasons.
Who?
Your wife, I believe, wants to.
I've been told that. One thing that I want to add is, and I'm not sure, and I believe the gentleman over there had started talking about, there is an empty area that's right next to the storage facility. Please stop walking by me.
On South Main Street?
Yeah, on South Main Street. And the bus, we, so we live on the north side. So the bus travels south down, down South Main Street, turns around, and uses that little turnaround area, and then comes back to safely pick up the children that are on the north side. The bus driver has said numerous times that she's having, and my daughter, my daughter can attest to it. She's mentioned it to me. I'm not sure about this young man here, if he'd be willing to say it. But there's trucks that are parked there. I'm assuming the drivers are sleeping or whatever, waiting for their next...
I could've said that. I could've said that.
Hold on.
I couldn't say that.
Waiting for their next load. But the bus driver's having more and more difficulty safely navigating that area so that they can safely pick up the children.
No, you're talking, you're talking around trucks, or you're talking about Stop and Shop trucks?
I'm assuming that they're Stop and Shop trucks. They're...
The ones next, the turnaround next to Main Street are on Resendiz property.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm...
They gotta be Stop and Shop, cause they're refrigerated trucks. They're refrigerated trucks.
It's, 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 usually, there's a lot, there's a lot of times it's just one, I took a video, there was three. One right after another, bang, bang, bang. And that's, that afternoon, the bus driver made it a point to say to me that she had such a hard time turning around that morning to pick up the kids.
The owner of the property is on record, call him up and ask him not to have, let the trucks park there. It is private property. It's not town regulated property.
And, and, and I, like I said, I don't know who owns a property, but it's, granted, I don't even know if the bus should technically be turning around there.
You must have given them permission. It's private property to turn around. Now, if that's the case, then they can not do it.
And the trucks are, you know, if the trucks could just even move back, it's just, it's, for the safety of the kids, it's, the bus needs to navigate safely.
And I'm sure he would wanna do what it's, whatever's best, but that's private property. You have to talk to the property owner.
The bus must have got permission to make that turn there.
Yeah, I'm sure they, I'm sure that they did. But like I said, the bus driver has, has mentioned on a couple of different occasions that it's getting more and more difficult for her to navigate that as a result of the buses, I'm sorry, the trucks are there. And my daughter has told me that the bus driver sits there and beeps the horn, and the trucks don't even move.
It's just ignorance. I mean, they don't care, basically. They don't, they don't live here. They don't care. And like I said, what would it take to make a law that they hit a bus, and then they say, okay, let's make a law now, we can't come by anymore? What's it gonna take? How do you make a bylaw?
We can't make a bylaw. That's a state highway. That's seventy-nine. We don't, we don't control seventy-nine.
On some of the videos, you'll see a truck that stopped immediately behind the bus, and it's, it's right next to it. There's, I wanna say it's, it's what, fifty feet that they're supposed to do?
Hundred feet.
Hundred feet. They're not even close to that. I have video, I have it recorded.
When is seventy-nine end?
Unfortunately, I don't get a shot of the license plate. I wish I did, cause I would be reporting on a daily news.
There's like certain sections that's owned by the state, and there's certain sections that are owned by, remember you talked to the department, the DOT?
There's, there's sections that...
There's certain sections that are...
Seventy-nine goes right through.
No, it doesn't. No, it does not. No, it does not. Seventy-nine, seventy-nine picks right up after exit nine, exit nine is where seventy-nine picks back up again.
Yep.
Exit nine, okay.
State maintains it up to, I think it's seventy-nine, South Main Street, right around that area. They'll maintain it, and that's it.
We're based...
We maintain after that, but it's all state. State road is, state law says what kind of roads they have, and who can use them. Using it's primary road. That's back to the chief. He would have the expertise.
Is there any section between South Main Street and, and exit A B that's owned by, Free Town is not state?
I'm gonna have to defer to the highway survey.
It goes back and forth.
But that wouldn't make a difference. Under the law, the town can't restrict vehicle traffic on a public way. There are certain exceptions, for hazardous materials, dimensions, you know, width, height, et cetera. But generally speaking, you can't have a prohibition on a public way. That's, that's the law.
And I'll say something on the police department's behalf, so to speak. If they put up a radar trailer, they're great. Word gets out on the radio, everybody does the speed limit until they're gone. They did it on the Bay Shores. I watched everybody drive perfectly slow by that sign. Soon as it was gone, fifty miles an hour on narrow road.
Those trailers are a joke. But you know what? Who's doing it? Most of the time, it's the residents that are...
Oh, absolutely. So, I mean, theoretically, it should be unmarked, unmarked people doing it. I don't believe in entrapment. You know you're speeding, so there's no, shouldn't be anything entrapped. And they can't pull people over on seventy-nine, tractor trailers especially, can't pull them over. They have to stop in the road. That creates a whole nother safety issue. The police cannot pull over a tractor trailer for speeding, as much as I'd love them to.
You ever pulled over a tractor trailer in the past?
Usually it involves following the tractor trailer unit right into Stop and Shop. But as that gentleman pointed out, that road is very narrow, with curbing, and it is very dangerous to do a motor vehicle stop. So, it is problematic.
Does anybody have any ideas that we don't have?
Push it on the state.
Yeah, we'll just keep on pushing. I mean, and also, maybe Carol can get that, the highway sign changed to say Stop and Shop Trucks.
That would help.
I did push that with her, too. She said she's gonna meet with it.
And as far as, Rich, as far as your, and like I said, I told you before when we talked, anything I can do to help you get a noise abatement thing there? Because that's really what you need.
Well, one of the things that we considered was, again, there are more trucks now. Earlier, we talked about putting up a sound barrier, a wall, if you will. And they told me that under the federal law, there wasn't enough of a decibel level. I bet you there is now. So if we ran that now, we could get a nice, cause it'd make me and Howard and everybody down the road very, very happy. You get those trucks with those loud exhausts that come blasting up that thing, and then around the curve, it's like a racetrack, you know? Hey, you guys aren't doing anything. I wish you were. That's a terrible thing for me to say, but it's a fact. There's nobody around. It's troopers, but that's it. I don't tell you what I'd see. There isn't a jake break.
Maybe...
Is that really enforceable?
No, no, it's, it's maybe a quarter of a mile up the route from where our house is, and over the weekend, there was, about one-thirty in the morning, there was a truck literally right outside our house. My, my daughter woke up in the middle of the night screaming. Our windows were shaking. You could feel it in the whole house. And I understand there's nothing you can do, but it's...
But you, I mean, you're arguing both sides, the argument too. The reason for a jake break is to augment your regular braking system, as Mr. St. Rockover, they can attest to. So that's why they use the jake break is to help their braking system. So, we want them to go slow, we want them to be efficient in braking, they use their jake brake. That's what helps them stop, which makes a lot of noise and riles windows in your house, cause I can attest to that also.
It scares my dogs, cats. I can't find anybody for an hour.
Doesn't scare, if it scared the wife, I would've been still living in South Main Street. It didn't scare my wife.
I have a bunch of chain emails with Jim LaBrec, cause he wanted me to send the videos, which I have been, but then he's just stopped. He's stopped replying to me about a month ago. You know, I guess he got sick of seeing the videos, you know?
Or you're a nuisance like I am.
I just care about the safety of, not just my daughter, there's a bunch of other children that go on a bus, and I see, you know, it takes a long time for a truck to slow down when a bus stops, you know? It's just dangerous, that's all.
So anybody stay up, your daughter's waiting for a bus. You stay up.
She's, she's wanna record all the videos, cause I'm working. So she sent me the videos.
I have to wait in my car, because to stand out on the end of the driveway with him is very dangerous, especially when both trucks are going by, on, you know, in each direction. So I sit in the car, pulled into the driveway to stay away from the street, cause stuff blows out when they go by, garbage and everything, we're standing there, we're getting hit with garbage, tree branches, open manias, so...
Keep following up with LaBrec though, and definitely with Carol and...
Like you own, I appreciate if you can become more of a, you know, stick on, keep on hitting them.
Well, we gotta keep pushing. We're gonna get some enforcement there. If that's okay with the chief, we'd like to get some extra enforcement down there and make sure that, you know, there is no speeding and stuff.
Feel free to come park at the end of my driveway one day.
I was just gonna say, we got a few room in ours.
We're the first house where Stop and Shop comes out of, on the right-hand side.
But they're gonna pull over anybody's speed, not just Stop and Shop trucks.
Oh, they should, they should. It's twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay, unfortunately, that's, we as the town can't do anything. You want me to sit down with Mr. LaBrec again? I'm more than happy to do that.
That'd be great. Just force my concern.
He doesn't have to see me either, cause, but I'll try my best again.
We'll be seeing the state reps and senators.
I'll try. Okay. We tried, you know? We tried.
I get it, I get it.
You know what I'm saying?
What's next?
Yeah, behind that. The next one is Mr. Sean Prevention from DCR.
Thank you for your patience.
I hope this isn't contentious.
Depends what you wanna do.
I think everybody's gonna be happy about it.
We won't tell them that you work for the state.
Well, I didn't wanna, I was trying to shrink down.
You're trying to put on signs, right?
I have nothing to do with DCR.
You work for the state? We need to talk.
Nothing to do with DOT.
You thought you were getting out of here, bitch.
He has to do with the state forest.
He wants to make more state forest.
Wants to make more state forests.
I do, I do. Yeah, so that's why I'm here. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
My name is Sean Prevention, and I'm a land protection specialist with Department of Conservation and Recreation. I've been working, trying to expand Free Town State Forest as part of the Greater Southeastern Mass Bio Reserve for about five, six years now, and working on different projects. And I've had one in the harbor for about four years. That finally looks like it might be able to happen. And that is depicted on the map you have in front of you. You'll see the big green piece across the top, just north of the Lakeville line. That was a town of Lakeville property that we were able to conserve a couple of years ago, almost seven hundred acres up there. Immediately south of the town of Lakeville, Free Town line, is a, another vast area of undivided, unprotected land. If you lump the forest core, that is the lake village piece, and everything south of there, you actually have a natural heritage that's determined to be the largest unprotected and undivided forest or eastern Massachusetts. Yeah. So, don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure I did some work in my GIS, and I think this is the largest unprotected, undivided forest area outside of the Berkshires. But I say, I'll say Eastern Mass to be safe for now. There's definitely larger pieces out there. But especially because of the eastern mass and the kind of development pressure that you guys have down there, it's pretty extraordinary to have that kind of an area. I've been talking with Mr. Resendiz for a number of years. You may remember a couple of years ago, I came before you and to help with applying seventy-five acres of his land that was right next to that Lakeville piece. Had to come out of chapter sixty-one, so I came before you guys. And we have an agreement on his five hundred acres on there. I've applied for a big state grant to help fund the project. And if you look at the map, it doesn't make much sense for us to move forward with that unless we can also move forward on the potential of conserving the hundred and twenty-three acres of town of Free Town tax titled property that funds it. Those are the pink areas.
Two-two-nine-eight.
Yeah, there's five parcels. But you have to look real close. There's two very small ones right down at the entrance of Chase Road.
Your intuition.
Oh, okay.
That's where the old parts and stuff is, with the bulkets.
Yes, that was a tax taking, right?
There's a, there are a lot of these houses and other...
Oh, there's all kinds of great stuff. So, DCR is looking to move forward on getting appraisal done, and getting title work done to find out exactly what these are getting into. If there are title problems, obviously, they won't be able to move forward on purchasing property, conserving it. You can only purchase property with the title. There, the town has been kind enough, Jack has been kind enough to help direct somebody, I'm sorry, I got the gentleman's head.
There he is. That's Mike.
Oh, that's you. Oh, thanks. He's done some great title work on some of these parcels.
He's very, he's very helpful to us in that regard. He's self-taught. And, yeah, he's a great resource.
Yeah, definitely. It was very helpful. I do appreciate it. So that, so the work that he's done, I would build into a scope of work for a title examiner.
I would think that we only spot, it's already been foreclosed.
Not necessarily. Even though it's been a tax title and all that, a lot of times we find out that, you know, these properties went through this process twenty, thirty years ago, sometimes longer, and the process was not necessarily followed to the letter, and that there might be errors unknown out there.
If it's already going to foreclosure, and the year has passed, they cannot get it all. If the town has foreclosed on this, this is after tax title, after tax title, if it goes to foreclosure in the land court, it's a foreclosure decree. And the year passes, no one can get it all.
I don't think those degrees have been reported on some of these pieces. Mike might be able to speak to that. Come on up, Mike. Part of the, oh, yeah. Part of the issue was, we just, we didn't have book and page. These are parcels that are, if you look in the assessors records, there's no book and page reference. So that's what my part of this was, was to track down books and pages for some of them. Some of them still don't have books and pages.
Did you go to the treasures office for the foreclosure records?
We did look in there. Some of these went back eighty years, and Jess was not able to find the ones that were bad ones. When we looked in there, we looked in the registry of deeds for some of them. That's where we got the few breaks that we did came with the registry of deeds. It's not that they're not out there, it's just that we either haven't... It's not that they're not out there, it's just that we either haven't found them or yet don't know exactly where they are.
So this tech is, is people that are searching down.
Right, hopefully the couple I figured out will help them and they'll be able to chase the rest of them down. Yeah, so, yeah, we would pay for the title exam. Say pays for that. And they come out with something that certifies title to X, Y, Z and then says we can't certify A, B, and C for these following reasons. And then it's upon the town to correct service title conditions. So we had a bigger project in mind originally, but the town went ahead and conserved a big chunk of this land fairly recently, from what I understand, which is fantastic.
We put the purple pieces in jurisdiction.
Open this one in.
So I think we're down to, I think we're down to one hundred and twenty-three acres now. And I think what it is that I'm looking for from you folks is an agreement to work with D C R over some years, over six months or so. So that if we have an idea about price by early spring, what the state might be able to offer you and we have an idea of what the title issues are, that we can get it on the springtime meeting. Pardon my ignorance with the regulations, but I think it's up to you folks to say yea or nay for more articles. So we're planning on moving forward with the appraisal and the title work. We can get that up and running.
My question I had, it looks like you left proprietor's, is that proprietor's way that goes through there?
Yeah.
That's not part of the taking, not part of the negotiation, so what's the start of that?
These ancient ways have, it really depends how the town...
Are we considering an accepted way?
I don't believe it's accepted, but when you go back through the deeds, they all say they run two proprietors' way. None of them say that they include proprietor's way. So I think, I don't want to speak forlorn, but I think that might be almost like a way in existence.
An ancient way.
Way of...
They're ancient ways, yeah.
And it's not, I think there's some of it that's not entirely that. There's a lot of wet that crosses proprietor's way.
Right.
Yeah, actually, if you flip to the second page, I put the coverage on, so it's just a little contest with the lands like...
So our annual town meeting, the only meeting after the first of the year, that's usually the first, Monday, Monday in June.
And then there's more, there's always the October meeting. They can't make that one.
That gives us a lot of time. The grant that I applied for that is gonna help with a lot of this project is for projects to be completed and applied tonight. So we have, we have some room to get all things tied up since then.
Which source of funds?
Different sources of funds for different parts of the project. For the larger five hundred acre piece we're talking about is the state's E E A's landscape partnership agreement, which is for five hundred acres or larger. You almost never get to do that in Eastern Mass. I'm hoping, this was just due last week, so I'm hoping they'll be excited about that. And I think the portion for, that we put aside for Freetown tax titles is about your corporate.
Is that we don't, we don't, annual appropriation, do you?
Absolutely.
I figure it'd be a good thing if it cleans up, cleans up tax title, the town gets to see some...
And the land can be protected wetland by people.
It'll be protected, it'll be managed the same way unless, per seeing some major change in how they want to manage Freetown State Forest. It should be managed under the same regs that the state forests have, so hunting will still be allowed. And actually, that's an important piece on that house site down on Chase Road, right at the bottom of proprietor's way, is that we're envisioning that site being cleaned up by the time it comes to the town. And that we can put a small turnout there, maybe a half a dozen cars or something.
Well, that was one of the reasons I was asking about proprietor's way, to see if that was something that you were maybe making an access road through there or something for...
No, we would never go the road up there, definitely not. But there is a nice trail system that runs through a lot of that land. A lot of it's A T V trails and they kind of go around and around on each other. But we'll be able to tie the trail route from Chase Road into the Old Woods roads that run south from Howlin Road up in Lakeville and connect them down through and you'll have miles, miles of hiking and cross-country trails at that point.
So will it be a parking area at the, right there at the entrance to this castle?
That's the right.
Yeah, the Bradley property.
Correct.
The old Bradley.
You would do something to delay what is and is not part of state property though, correct? I mean, there's a, there's a big block that you're not including that's also undeveloped, so
Correct.
you wouldn't want people to stray onto private property and think they're still on state property.
Correct. We typically mark the boundaries of the forest. In fact, our forester is a little, you heard about us moving forward on this piece and said, I adjusted the Lakeville line. So we do, we do mark them. The, that big grant we're applying for, from what I understand, they have a requirement that we survey the properties as part of the grant. To be honest, with this piece, I'm not sure that makes a lot of sense. I'd like to continue doing more work east and west of this piece in the future and if I can contact those owners and be successful with them, what's the point of surveying? We're gonna own the land on the other side, you know, hopefully in the future. But for now, as far as I know, we need to get the survey done, so, which means it'll be marked quite long.
Okay, we'll hear from you well before June, I guess.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I'll be in touch with Jack.
Your articles, Dr. Wimmo, April, May.
So in terms of the consideration for the town, for these pieces, you know, say we figure out all the tax title problems, appraisal comes in, I have a number I can put on the table for you guys to, should I come back before the board? So that you can vote on the number and that number moves into the warrant?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, as soon as possible. Have any idea when that might be in the spring?
The appraisal? Well, the, we usually... I can get it back within a couple of months, the holidays coming up, so...
February, March?
February, February and March.
Okay.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Do you have a way we can figure out the last one?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have...
But we can make all of that stock and shop, that whole area, state forest. There you go. Listen, O S R?
I wish I had friends at D O T. Take care, thanks again.
All right, thanks, Joe.
That's fine, we'll do it Wednesday. Unless I get something on business.
You guys, we're gonna bypass the road issue. Posted a meeting for Wednesday at what time, Alan? Five-thirty, since we have a building committee meeting. So... Well, yeah, I don't want you guys hanging around waiting for this, okay?
I got rounds.
You got rounds?
I got rounds, I got rounds.
I got kids.
Huh?
I got one of my kids.
Your father did that for you?
You remember rounds?
What's that?
Your father did that for you?
Oh, yeah, that'll go well.
Hey, why don't you stop down and say hi to them?
Huh?
Why don't you stop down and say hi to them?
I'm gonna get a little time to go.
See you, Ben.
See you guys later. See you Wednesday.
All right.
So what else we got?
What were you guys doing?
Oh, I haven't, no.
See, Lisa's not here and we're all messed up.
Well, we're not all messed up. We got Jackie Brown, she's up next.
Jackie, come on down.
Well, I'm just here and see if you've got any questions.
We do. What's this whole public records?
It's going into effect January first.
Yeah, that's where we're at, public records.
As a board, you have to appoint, you know, public records officers, officer, according to the law. Could be one or more.
I did before you got here.
Well, automatically the town clerk is one.
Good, that's...
And the master one, congratulations.
No, we were going to do, but we figured we better wait for you.
Oh, what you saying?
So we're gonna bestow upon you the position of the master public records coordinator.
If that's what the board wishes, but there could be more than one. That's what I was trying to tell you.
Well, each department needs their own person responsible, correct?
Yes, and those would be just kind of records officers, each department, and that's what you would do. You would state that you would appoint every department head, a records officer, but that they, you would have to put some guidelines into place for these department heads to tell them how they have to process a public records request. Now, this isn't the everyday public records request like I had stated in the note I gave to you, like assessors get a butters list and tax collector gets municipal lien requests all the time. Those are public records, but those are everyday ones. These would be for a public records request for a few years back, say a payroll or anything like that. Those things there have to be recorded and the master or the chief or whatever you want to call the main public records officers, officer or officers would have to keep a tally sheet. And in fact, at our last meeting that Alan and I went to and also Gary was there, this is a sample that Copman and Page had gave us of a tally sheet that you're gonna have to keep because at the end of the year, we gotta report to the secretary of public records all the public records requests we've gotten, what was done, if there was any kind of court proceedings, when it was answered, what you charged, everything like that has to be recorded and has to be annually submitted. Now, there's certain records of certain departments, say like police, fire, that say I shouldn't have privy to on some of the records and stuff. So that's why in my thing, I had suggested that maybe the police chief, the fire chief, be also a master or chief public records officer for their documents, for their departments. The superintendent of schools you could appoint because they're kind of a different entity because they're regional. So just, so you would appoint it that way and designate it that way. So if anybody come to us for a public records request, say for schools, you would say, no, we took a vote and the superintendent's gonna handle those. We don't handle those. If it's a police one, then it go to the police, but then he's gonna have to do something like this for the end of the year. The police chief and the fire chief.
I have a question. Here's how I picture it, because everything has times. When the public record request comes in, you have a certain amount of time to fill that request, correct?
Yeah, we used to have ten days, now it's ten business days. And you have to, have to respond to them, different things within the ten days.
They need to be stamped in pretty much. When the request comes in, it needs to be stamped in. So that's why I think a central person would be good. Now, does the master have to handle the material or to just make sure the material was relayed to the person that was requesting it?
The master, all public records should, requests say for a town hall should all go through that one person and then that one person would go and sign afterwards. And then they gotta follow up to make sure that they're answered.
My question's more to, do you, say for example, we did make you the master person for the town, just for example. And then a public request comes in from the police department. Could you follow through and say, Carlton, we have this request, fire chief, we have this request, blah, 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 blah?
Some towns are doing it.
And then they, he sends it out, sends you the receipt saying, I sent it out, this is the time, you can stamp it out and you didn't actually have to see what was in it? Or do you have to physically see, has the master physically see what was given?
No, no, I don't have to see it.
I think so too, and I think the person that has a timestamp...
On certain, on certain things...
Because that's, that's, that's what happens. It comes in and...
Well, we know what happened on, on one specific public records request, possibly some information got out that shouldn't have. Sometimes it could be social security numbers, sometimes it could be, say on a payroll, could be withdrawal, I mean, things that they take out of their pays. Certain things are not public records and everything.
Now, you tried to...
So sometimes it could be that...
But that's why I was saying that the master person doesn't necessarily have to see what the request. They get the request, they make sure the right person gets it and submits the right material, but doesn't necessarily have to see the material they're submitting.
Unfortunately, there's some department heads that don't know the whole public record law's that good and there's certain exemptions of things and they don't know. So there's, sometimes I would say it would benefit, police and fire definitely don't. They know their public records, there's exemptions and everything under them. They know what the exemptions are. So theirs, we would not have to see, no. So in some towns, there is only one public records officer and it is either, it could be the town administrator, it could be the town clerk. Like I said, the town clerk is a default and is a public records officer, but you can have more than one.
In my opinion, we should have a master one, one chief, whatever you wanna go, and then make department heads also records officers.
Right.
So if, for example, I keep using you, and you don't have to be, that's not, if you don't want to be the public records chief.
But she's already one, she's...
She is one, but she doesn't have to be the chief, the one responsible to get all requests.
Well, she's, I thought you said that...
I will say I'm the most knowledgeable only because the town clerks are...
Are you interested in being the chief?
It's gonna be a lot of work.
It is, that's why I'm asking.
So I would, if you're gonna only have one, yes.
One chief, I'm telling you.
Yes.
And then we, if we had department heads that are public records officers, she can go into them and say, you're the officer, this is what they're requesting, and follow through with it. And like you said, it would have to come through you to make sure, the control person.
Okay, so the board has to appoint somebody or some persons by January first. And then we have to have rules and regulations that we have to post on the website to let people know the process. And then you have to get rules and regulations into place for July first within the town.
Well, if we were gonna do that, you would probably be someone that we'd wanna know, I mean, the other one's gonna follow up and do it, what you would want for rules and regulations, how you would want it handled.
Yeah, and Copman and Page is right on it, so it's easy enough to get. I'm sure they're gonna be drawing it up for other towns and it's gonna be very similar. I get, I gave you samples of what some of the appointments are. I get it from town clerks and stuff. We have a network that everybody gives each other what's going on in their town and what they're doing. So that, that shouldn't be an issue.
Well, like, for me, Jack wouldn't necessarily be the best person to have it because he's, A, he's part-time, he's not there every day. B, he's not there, he's not ready to stamp things in, so a person has to come to him, he gets stamped in with time. We have a certain amount of days to respond by.
It's gotta be the town clerk.
To me, it's a redundancy, it's...
Absolutely.
It's gotta be the town clerk.
It's your job right now for this whole war, and you always did it anyhow, correct? Unless it went directly to a department.
It, it, sometimes it did, but most of the time when somebody's gonna request public records, if they don't know who to go to, it would come through the town clerk.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint the town clerk as the master control person for the new public records law. And subsequently, we appoint the department head, or we'll do right now, and the department head as the onsite
records officer for each of their own perspective.
Each department head.
And all documents will pass from the town clerk to the department heads. They will do the work to ensure everything is done and report back to the control person so she can annotate the mark.
Second. Everything you said.
All right, motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, starting January first, if Jeff could get out a, I got a sample letter, I gave them some sample letters of what some of the other administrators are doing to advise all the department heads so they're all aware of it also.
And contact Copman and Page to see if they have some rules and regulations that we can just implement.
Right, something more...
Yeah, I'm sure they will, I'm sure they will.
Right, everybody's doing it.
All right, now, before Jackie runs, we have something else on the agenda. And that is, discuss appointments made in July for officials who have not come into the town clerk's office to be sworn in. Jackie spoke with me about this. The issue here is that if you don't get sworn in, and this is my understanding, Jackie can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you don't get sworn in, then you're really acting without a cover, in essence.
Yeah, the state requires that, state law and the state constitution requires that everybody be sworn into their duties by the town clerk, or it could be a justice of the peace or something like that, or in my case, I get sworn in by the moderator. So there's different things, but it goes to when they're appointed. And the issue that came up was, is if there... And the issue that came up was, is if there's a request for different things, these people who are on boards even and stuff like that have to be sworn into their duties before they can do actual votes and things like that. And the town clerk has to give these board members a copy of the open meeting law and the ethics every year. And they're signing off for that also. So if somebody's on a board and they're not sworn in, then they shouldn't be voting on things.
And their ethics, they may have lapsed their ethics, recertifications.
Some board members are every three years, some are every year. Most, the majority of appointees are every year.
I don't see many board members. I see two.
Twelve, eleven.
Yeah, and the board members are, and, and the board members have been pretty good in coming in.
Chief.
Once in a while.
You got a second?
Yeah, he, he's gotten that list.
You've got a bunch of people on here that.
They've been coming in.
Appointments?
Yeah.
Yeah, I directed Sergeant Rose fairly recently to contact whoever was on the list. And today he reported to me that several of the people had gone in recently.
Three people gone in.
So we're working on that.
You got, yeah, there's a bunch on here.
So we got another 10.
Couple supervisors.
Well, I mean, if, if they're working during the day, we can certainly have them go down to the town hall while, you know, while they're working.
How are we going to get the others?
Huh?
How are we going to get the others?
Well, I'll have to look and see if there's any overlaps between the midnight shift and the day shift.
That's what's hard, it's the guys that are.
Some of these aren't even, I don't know if they're even active people on your department anymore.
Yeah, they are, they've come back on.
John Lopes.
John Lopes requested a.
We have the list.
Has, he requested a leave of absence.
For a year.
But I think most of those other people, some of them are full-time guys, right? No, well, you got one.
Well, someone because he's new, he just switched over and reserved to full-time.
Well, I mean, they should be able to go down there. If they go down there on their own time, does that cost us money?
That's, you have to be concerned about that. You're right. If you order somebody to go down outside of when they're working and Jackie's available, yeah, I think potentially you could be hit with a minimum of a four-hour callback.
So if they issue a ticket now, they're not sworn in?
No problem with that. Case law.
Case law says available.
Case law says whether you go down and you get sworn in or not, you have the full authority, does not affect prosecutions, et cetera.
So I wonder why we have this requirement then, why the state has that requirement?
Well, I, I think that, you know, maybe we look into three-year appointments. You know, appointed for three years, subject to applicable.
Well, especially full-time officers.
CBA, et cetera. So even if they're appointed three years, though, and God forbid something unfavorable happened, you could still act within the CBA, dismiss them, et cetera.
Unfortunately, I still have to get them to, well, what I could do though, as far as that goes, they still have to be given their ethics law every single year. But I can, those, they don't have to sign in front of me. You could get them to sign off and get the.
Isn't this a condition of appointment? They don't have to be sworn in to be at all, certainly in town or free town?
Not in the, it's not under the CBA, no.
The state law says that everybody has to be, if that's appointed, has to be sworn in.
So in essence, if they're not sworn in, they're not employees? Is that what we're hearing here?
No, that's not true at all. That's not true at all. It's still, you're still paying them. You're still acting as an employee.
So maybe you ought to exert some of your influence.
Well, I, I, I think I just mentioned what I, what I'll do. And I want to see who's coming off at midnight, coming on at eight. And maybe we can have Jackie come up and square three or four people in at a time, you know? Well, like, like I said, I spoke with Scott about this and I think
Yeah, I talked to Scott.
Two or three, four people have gone down and we'll, we'll.
Yeah, Scott is following up on it.
We'll chase the, this drag list.
July's coming?
Yeah, that's what I told him. Some of them thought they just came in and I said, well.
Go with the two-year program anyhow.
A while to come in the last time, maybe that's what.
Some are only partials, a couple are only partials.
They did think they, they had come in, so.
There we go.
So now we got that other people.
Thank you.
That's it for me?
Unless you want to stay.
No, and go home and watch the Patriots.
Call it an end to this meeting.
All right, make the motion for the.
Good luck.
All right, next thing on the agenda here is the annual renewal of liquor and other licenses issued by the Board of Selectmen.
We already did them, yes, we did it early.
All alcohol innkeeper's license for the Asonat Inn. The all alcohol package store license, Asonat Style Market Incorporated, Circle K, K and E Liquors Incorporated. The all alcohol Veterans Club, Freetown Memorial Post 6643 VFW. The all alcohol restaurant license for Independence Harbor Incorporated, The Nephews Italian American Kitchen Incorporated. The wine and malt package store, Prime Express. I'm going to hold off on the other one here to discuss the tax issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Entertainment license for Independence Harbor Incorporated, The Nephews Italian American Kitchen Incorporated, The Freetown Memorial Post 6643 VFW. The jukebox license for the Freetown Memorial Post 6643 VFW, the sale of the second-hand merchandise at Excel Recycling. Okay, so you want to handle those first before we go into the class two and class three motor vehicles?
Can we skip, pop out Excel first and then do everything else?
Okay.
We, to our knowledge, there's no outstanding complaints or issues with any of these establishments?
Not the ones that I read.
Okay. Taxes have been paid and none of them earned tax title?
Right.
Yeah, but everything's been inspected by Gary and by.
MLC. MLC is okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to endorse.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have, you want me, you want to discuss the one where there's a.
Excel?
Well, the other one that has back taxes.
Okay, that's fine.
We have, well, and the point in malt package store Grandpa's Place. If this is correct, we're talking about fiscal year 14, 15 taxes?
14, 15.
14, 15 and 16.
16, right.
Of $367.06, is that correct? That's, that's the MAC, that's the whole amount?
Personal property tax.
Oh, just personal property?
Was the problem, have we, have we talked, have you talked to him?
No, Lynette did. He, he said he was going to come in, but he hasn't.
I know, a while back he had an agreement, but I see in the notes that he hasn't paid.
He had an agreement on the real estate taxes which have been paid and voted by the.
So this is, this is the only thing he owes?
It is.
You think she could give him a call and say that we're holding up his license?
Sure.
Until the next meeting?
Sure.
It can't, Lincoln can't wait until next meeting. It can only be approved during the month of December for alcohol.
When is that next, Lynn? Can we, can we put it on for Wednesday? Is it too late to make Wednesday's agenda?
You have to approve it and then.
Make a condition, how, how we condition?
We can do it conditionally.
That it's paid by the end, by December 31st or it's null and void.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that, to conditionally approve as long as the tax, what is it?
367.06.
Is paid by December 31st.
If not, it's null and void. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that, I don't think you're at an issue, right? No. You, you held Excel?
Excel, this is for their, their used license?
The operation, the operation license, yeah.
All right. Doesn't this run December, December? Didn't we have that discussion on this? The second-hand merchandise license?
No, it runs to May.
It runs to May.
I don't know, I thought Mark Rich said that this type of license runs December to December. And we had done it in May because that's when they applied for.
No, we didn't, no, we did it the wrong way.
Just the opposite.
We did it for a full year, but it ended, it ends in May.
It ends in May, okay. So this is only going to be a six-month?
They approved it in December. And thinking that we go to December to December.
All right, so on backwards, right, goes in May. So it's December to May we're approving it for.
Is it May 30th? Is that when it ends under that rule?
It's supposed to end in, in May, yeah.
May 1st or the end of May?
I guess the end of May.
Hey, now, I'll find out. What's on, what's on the thing?
I guess I'll find out tomorrow. I thought it was the end of May, but I don't know.
What's on here for?
What's on here?
There should be listed date on, on here.
Do we have it in here?
Yeah, it's in there, it's on.
Use card, that's, that's the use card viewer.
That's on, you know, use cards, use cards.
Excel, right here. January, oh, here it is. January 1st, 17 through May 13, uh, May 31st, 17.
Can we condition this so we have hours of operation and stuff? Because we're currently, we don't have any.
Well, I would, I would condition, I would agree that we condition it based on, they've got some type of agreement pending.
I haven't seen that yet.
No, we haven't seen it. So, or make it conditioned upon.
It, it's going to meet DOT, I mean.
DEP.
DEP standards. But I also want hours of operation. Hours of operation should be from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And I think he asked for 7 to 2 on Saturday.
Yeah. You want to put that in?
Yeah.
Oh, let's do that.
Did you say that I can't?
7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. 7 to 2 on Saturday and no operation on Sunday.
If, if, if the DEP is not more restrictive.
Correct.
Okay.
At a, at a minimum.
At a minimum.
And must meet all DEP requirements.
You got that, Ellie?
You got a second?
I'll second it. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so this package we got to sign. Are you here for the road thing? We told everybody we're going to do it, we're going to do it on Wednesday night.
Wednesday, 5:30.
5:30. Annual review of class two and class three motor vehicle licenses and other licenses by the Board of Selectmen. Class two motor vehicle license for Bob's Motor Works, Cedar Street Garage doing business as Euro Classics, Chuck's Import Village, Sandman Auto Sales, PJ's Auto Sales, Miller's Auto Sales, Evolution Auto Sales Incorporated, CJ Auto Sales, Bola's Garage, John's Autobody in Sales, F and F Auto, JM Auto Sales, DPF Enterprises, Sharperhead Custom Cycles. Now for class three. Class three motor vehicle licenses, J and T Auto Salvage, Westgate Auto, Bug Stevens, Freetown Auto, Millis Industries Incorporated, Big Wheels Truck Sales Incorporated, East Freetown Auto Salvage LLC, CSA Auto Pots and DM Enterprises. And we have one graveyard license renewal for Millis Industries Incorporated.
Didn't we have an issue with one of them? Wasn't, um, Bug Stevens?
No doubt he did.
That's all, yeah, the son, the son bought it and paid it.
Excellent. So I'll ask the same questions as I was asking. Any complaints with any of these operations? No, MLC's good? Okay, nobody's in tax title or anything like that? I'll make a motion to endorse.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other packages to sign. And one graveyard, no, excuse me, one auctioneer's license renewed for J and T Auto Salvage.
Same questions. Everything's good on that? No complaints? No issues? Make motion to endorse.
Second. All, motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to turn the meeting now over to Selectmen Joe's for the Board of Health. And also, he's been kind enough to handle the personnel board issues.
All right, so the board, on the Board of Health, there is no issues currently on the agenda in front of the boards. There may be, surely we had a couple of nuisance properties that are, it looks like were finally getting cleaned up. So hopefully the next meeting we'll have a resolution to those. As far as the, acting as the chairman of the, acting as the chair for the Personnel Board, I have a couple of change of status forms. I have William J. Simmons, Jr. Seems he's retiring, so effective January 6, 2017, from Mechanic Highway Department, 2663 Perahu to retired. And this again is submitted by Charles Mackham.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Can you send him a letter of thanks for his hard work?
Thanks. Absolutely. Ellie? I have a change of status report for Taylor J. Podowski for December 19, 2016, from part-time dispatcher communications 1613 to part-time dispatcher communications 1688. It's a length of service increase submitted by Chief of Police Carlton Abbott.
Motion made to approve?
Second. I have a motion made in second. All in, uh, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you hold this for executive session?
Absolutely. The last we'd have is a change of status form that we're going to review in an executive session for, should I go through the rest of this or just? We'll discuss in the executive session?
Yeah. Second session.
All right, so we'll hold that off.
We'll come back if we have to sign it in open session.
Correct. So we will return from, from.
Yeah.
And that is it for personnel.
Okay, so now as we work our way down, the next scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting is January 9, January 23rd, February 6th and February 21st. We are going to have a building committee meeting Wednesday night at.
Which will be the next one, June 2, or something? We have a Selectmen meeting now scheduled for that.
Yeah, we're going to have one on, at 5:30 Wednesday night. And we're going to have a building committee meeting at 6:00 on Wednesday night. Old business, Adams Ave issue. Kind of an interesting twist in things. We had a gentleman come in last, last meeting.
Yes.
And he talked about the fact that the highway people on the free highway, uh, the tree warden took down five pine trees at a cul-de-sac at the end of Adams Street. Left the stumps. The next morning, Jack had the highway department go down there. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
They pulled the stumps out, graded it off. And we were going to talk to the tree warden. And that, that next day or the day after, we got a nice email, nice letter from one of the ladies that actually lives on the circle, thanking us for, for taking down the trees like they wanted it to be done, taking the stumps out and they're asking us to tar it so their kids could have, they play it in the circle down there. It's on a cul-de-sac. So here we go again. Some people want something, some people want something different. You have to get a nice letter from Mr. Adams. Did we, thank enough for the action that was taken, which was contrary to what the people wanted.
Well, no, he was happy the stumps were gone, and they were happy the stumps were gone. So everybody's happy the stumps were gone. As far as replanting and, I don't, I don't know if we can fill that with asphalt, because it's, it's a legal road.
Yeah.
So we need to maintain lanes. I don't think kids should be playing in the middle of the road anyhow. I told my kids to do it a couple of times, but that's besides the point. So as far as keeping a median there, that, that'll be up to the Highway Department and the police. Probably should talk to them a little too.
You wait till the spring and snow blows?
Right.
Right now, the board's instructions are to have them replanting the street.
Right, and we'll, we visit in the spring, see if that's what we want to do.
So we'll keep that on the agenda for the spring. All right, now, what do we have? We have a few things that have to go into executive session and here's what we're going to do. We have an attorney, Jessica, do you mind hanging around? We got to go to executive session for something else. All right, that way that we don't tie up the attorney that probably has to travel a long ways. Where can, can she go somewhere where it's warm so she's, you want to go upstairs? That way it's, it's warm up there? Right near that great door.
Turn the lights, make yourself comfortable. Don't worry about the ghosts, they won't bother you.
It's the rats and mice.
Nice. It's the rats and mice.
We got to, we got to, we got to do a little formal.
We got to do the formal thing, okay. So we'd like to go into executive session because of litigation between the Town of Freetown and Officer Kara Pigeon under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three. And we're going to discuss bargaining and the litigation. And in my opinion, to do this in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's ability to come to a resolution or whatever. And we're also going to go into executive session later on, after this part of it is done, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-two, in preparation for negotiations with a non-union person, with non-union personnel to conduct contract negotiations with treasurer, or temporary treasurer by her correct title, Jessica Thomas. Treasurer slash collect, I'm sorry, Jessica Thomas. And again, to discuss this in open session would be detrimental to our position. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, I second that motion.
Just to be clarified, we're not going into executive session for the.
Deployment of security personnel.
Correct, we're not doing that.
That was on the agenda, we're not doing that. Okay, so we have, and we're going to come back, we're going to go back into open session when this, when these two things are done. So a motion was made, I seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the members, Mr. Joe's?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek, yes. Okay, we're back at the open session after our two, after our executive session.